And oh three. And we're waiting for delivery of some items.
And here she comes.
Excellent, thank you Jordan.
Jordan, how do I get this to go off?
Oh Rich. Did the budget committee not recommend the school board thing? Would it seem to be?
We're on camera. I'll tell later.
So I'm going to ask about it.
Correct, excellent.
But we can change it so no one.
We're just gonna take it off.
Yeah.
Faster. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our first.
Thank you, thank you. This is Judy's.
Oh, thank you. Now I know what I'm doing. Sort of.
No problem.
We are open for public comments. We have two public with us right now. Michael.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to thank the select board for taking up the issue of junk yards and for the proposed article. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's great.
Thank you. Appreciate the support. Rich, did you have something you wanted to say?
I wanna say, I wanna second what Michael just said. Thank you very much. As I said in the meeting last night, I'm sure it's incredibly difficult to approach that subject. And thank you.
You are welcome from all of us to, we know it's been on your radar for some time. And we have people on, Dina, would you?
Okay, Hebe, would you like to say something? I'm sorry the audio is poor, but I don't know that there's anything.
No, thanks, I'm just interested in watching you guys in action, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
John, say hello.
Um, I guess my question is just, is the data that you're working with to discuss this issue in the meeting today, is that, is that public? Is that something that we can see?
Yeah, cuz it's fine. Yes.
Sales data for the assessment?
Yes.
Yes, I didn't know what data you were talking about since we have about an inch thick of paperwork.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, it is. And I believe if you come in, Jordan can probably give you a copy.
Yep, or she can email it to you, whichever.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Give me, it'll be great.
Okay.
Okay, you touch base with Jordan.
Yep.
Um.
Rusty.
Rusty.
I assume, I haven't looked at my.
That's from last night.
That's from last night's meeting.
Oh.
Rusty, did you wish to say anything? Guess not.
Okay.
Or he's muted.
Well, he can unmute himself, as I say. Everybody else does, I don't, I can't do it.
Okay, Ben, moving right along. Yes, we have minutes to review and hopefully approve from January twenty five.
I'll move on. One second.
Thank you, all, any other discussion?
Ben, aye.
David?
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, that's approval on twenty fifth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And just so folks know, we did meet this week on Tuesday, so we'll probably get to those minutes at our next Thursday meeting.
God willing.
Okay, manifest coming.
It's not ready.
At the next meeting, okay.
Natalie, I'm gonna have to ask you, you can't wait, that would be a whole month.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have to ask you if you can review it and approve it via email.
Okay, um.
Individually.
So David and Ben, keep an eye out for the manifest, look through it. If you have an issue, let, let Dina know. If you don't have an issue, let Dina know.
If you're okay with that, I hope.
Are we okay with that, both of you?
Mm-hmm.
I'm getting some nods, so, okay, coming. So just, Dina, when you do send it out, a little reminder note because you know our brains.
Yes.
Go elsewhere.
Really? Absolutely.
I'll be puppy sitting this weekend, so my brain will really be gone. Okay, Little Town Meeting. The last couple of years, the library, the librarian, very graciously hosted a Zoom for Candidates Night and for limited questioning, mostly on anything school-wise because that comes right up on the same week. Do we wish to have an in-person Little Town Meeting this year? Or if we begged and pleaded, could we maybe seek to have librarian do it again? Do we have thoughts on that? You, David, probably never had a Little Town Meeting. You set up, almost as if it was town meeting, in the school community room. And we get a moderator and people stand up and identify themselves and why they're running for what they're running. And then they're, they discuss some zoning amendments and often items from the school, occasionally items from the town.
Yeah, it's the only place they get to discuss the zoning amendments cuz you can't discuss that at town meeting.
No, but they can go to the planning board meetings.
Well, they, they could've gone, yes.
They could've gone.
In the public hearing.
Did you have much attendance when you were working on the zoning amendments?
So, yeah, let me, let me speak to that. The first meeting, there was considerable feedback. We took that into account. Changed the, the language of the proposal for the second public hearing, which I don't believe had any public attendance. So, there has been that discussion. I think, I'm, I'm then gonna switch gears a little bit and say I would strongly recommend having an in-person Little Town Meeting. I think it's a good way for people to meet, to talk to candidates. And I think specifically in the case of the.
School bond.
Oh, well, that too. No, I wasn't gonna, yeah, that too. But the, for the case of the zoning amendment?
Yes.
That's a long, long thing. And it's like, what does it say?
Yeah.
And that would be good to have a summary. And then also for the Energy Aggregation Committee's report, I think.
That'll be a long night.
It would be a long night. And it would, it would help people not say, what is all this stuff on town meeting day? So I'll put my chit in to say that, that would be my sentiment. And I guess I'll also say one thing out of, out of order, I have to go meet my electrician. I'm gonna leave my toy running here, so.
And if we go into non-public sessions?
So the thing to do is, yeah, let's.
All the.
Just put a cap.
Well, there is no cap on it and, and, ah, so the thing to do would be to close the door.
Okay.
And then unplug it and just leave it in the hallway.
Okay.
That would be perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Unplug.
Yeah, there, there's a little door on the side of it.
Okay. We shall do that.
And maybe Michael would be interested to do. Are you gonna be here?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay.
But do have, can I ask something?
One sec. Okay, Michael.
I think Little Town Meeting has been valuable when I've gone to and I wonder what the others who have attended it think it's worthwhile.
Okay, I'm, I'm interested in David and Ben's thoughts too.
Yes.
I, I happen to do whatever people want. I don't have a strong feeling whether or another. On the one hand, it seems funny to have a big meeting with lots of public discussion where you can't make any decisions or do anything. To some extent, I see, it seems to me that it sounds like what gets addressed at Little Town Meeting is redundant with what gets addressed at an actual town meeting. But if people wanna do it, nice.
Okay, it's, okay. Ben?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Any of our public that's on Zoom, Dina, do they wish to speak to this?
Raise your hand if, if you'd like to make a comment about this issue. Hebe Clinton would like to, go ahead, Hebe.
Thanks. I, I think that, you know, we, as a town, haven't had many opportunities to come together in the last few years. And some of the issues on the warrant and ballot this year are a little bit complicated, from life of community power to Shoestrack Road, to, to the zoning amendment. And to have an informational discussion would be a way to perhaps shorten what actual town meeting turned out to be. To some extent, to have well-informed folks. That was my thought.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, John or Rusty? I see no hand, but wait here.
No, thank you. I, I can't figure out how to raise my hand anymore, but, um, no, no questions.
Okay, thank you, John. So, Dina, a lot of the work will also fall onto you. What are your feelings on this?
Well, personally, I've always thought Little Town Meeting was great. I like to hear the candidates. I, you know, I think it's an important part. I also have to agree with Hebe that I think there's a couple of thing, things on the warrant that are, I think will be valued by being explained. You know, you don't have to have a debate about it, and you shouldn't, but getting information out to people, I think are, is important.
Okay.
All right, then, let's do it.
Okay, we will do it. I believe it starts at seven, should we start at six?
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
What is the date for this?
You can, one, do six thirty.
It's Monday.
Tuesday.
Little Town Meeting is usually on a Monday night?
Second Tuesday.
No.
Second Tuesday is town meeting.
Little Town Meeting has always been on us, on the first Tuesday, the Tuesday right before a town meeting, exactly a week.
I could've sworn it was a Monday. Okay.
Anyways, it doesn't matter.
That's all right, yeah.
That is how long it's been, well, it's.
Well, you can make it any.
So that would be Tuesday, March fifth?
Yep. But you can make it any night you guys want, except for the seventh, can't be the seventh cuz that's school district.
That's school district, so this is only two days before school district.
You can have it Monday night if that's a better nine.
Well, it would be three days.
For the moment, at this point.
What, what time is it usually?
It's usually seven, usually goes to about nine. And we would.
You could do six thirty. See what's the difference.
We would need to clear the school calendar and we would need to get a moderator. I think we can do that.
So six thirty to eight thirty P M on Tuesday, March fifth, is that the, what we're talking about?
We were talking about Tuesday, March fifth. That's also Super Tuesday with all the elections everywhere else, sure. Six thirty?
Whatever you guys all like.
Six thirty to eight thirty, Tuesday, March fifth. Okay, we will start working on that.
So we'll talk about to the school and then a moderator.
A moderator.
And actual town meeting is Tuesday, March twelfth.
Correct. Polls open at seven, we'll need to do poll sitting duty. Town meeting starts at nine o'clock. And it usually runs a couple hours, sometimes three.
What time does a town meeting itself start?
Nine.
Nine A M.
Nine A M.
Yes. And school district meeting, which is Thursday, the seventh, starts at six, I believe.
Yeah, six or six thirty, I can't remember which.
Yep.
It'll be on the back of your town report.
We'll have voting to do, we'll have voting coverage to do on Tuesday, the twelfth also.
Yes. Yes, Tuesday, the twelfth.
And that runs all day, am I correct?
Yep, seven to seven. Yes.
But we, we haven't.
We haven't done that yet. All three of us are expected to be there by nine to do the live section.
And then when it ends, you guys can take terms and divvy up the rest of the day.
We divvy up the rest. So, uh, have a little march. Oh, wait a sec. We could. When is our next, this is, yeah, we have one more meeting, we can do it at, we can.
Twenty second.
On the twenty second. All right.
While you're on the subject of Little Town Meeting, Laura communicated, double checking to make sure that you did want somebody from the Mitchell Municipal there.
Yeah, especially this year, we've got a bunch of stuff that's legal in Mitchell.
Thank you. I told her I was pretty sure you did, so.
I think that, unless you guys disagree, I, I.
You agree. Yep. I agree.
Okay. And I'm very, I'm pretty sure it'll be Joe, so.
And that's at big town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if you think you need somebody at Little Town Meeting, you can, but I don't. You don't really need to be debating it, you're just gonna give the facts and.
Yeah, and we need to make clear that Little Town Meeting is not a debate, it is a.
Correct.
It is an informational session.
Information.
And if there's something we don't know, we get a chance to look it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it also gives you, yes, a good idea of the kind of things you're gonna be addressing at, at regular town meeting.
Right.
And Hebe has her hand up again.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question, for Little Town Meeting, would it be all right to bring information cards about community power for distribution? Or is that, I know at town meeting, you can't do electioneering kind of stuff.
No, but at town meeting, I believe they sometimes have a table set up where there's extra information pamphlets. But I think, I don't have an answer for you.
That, that would be a good question for the moderator.
Yeah, when we have a moderator, we, we'll try and get that question answered. Again, this isn't an opportunity to really electioneer, it's informational.
Well, and these, these postcards, we're distributing them at the library, and they are straight informational, it's just the information is so positive, it's hard, hard not to feel like it's advocating.
Well, I know, that happens with a lot of things. But thanks for asking the question, we will try and give you an answer. And if we don't, you could bring them with you and ask the moderator in the evening.
Perfect. Super, thanks.
You're welcome. All right, next on our list, we have a letter, or two, for the abutting property owners on Shoestrack Road and Maple Lane. One letter advises them that we have two warrant articles on the town warrant having to do with the Classic Section between those two roads. And the other advises everybody on Maple Lane and Shoestrack Road that no work is permitted by anyone on the Classic Section unless they have in advance written permission from the Select Board to do the work. So, Dina, do you have copies of that letter?
Well, I don't, because they have to be individually addressed to people. And I haven't done that yet, but I need you to approve them. Then we can create the letters and then you could come in and sign them.
I have reviewed them and I'm comfortable with them. The, the only thing I wondered a little bit was with respect to the warning letter where we're telling people they can't do work on the road, is if we wanted to spell out the possible consequences of, you know, do, violating that.
If you do this, you'll be drawn and quartered and charged and whatever.
I think the consequences are that the town can go in and undo the work and charge the people who did it for the, for the, for the, for the cost of that. But I wasn't confident enough of that to, to put it in the letter and we'd have to go back to the attorney and confirm it, that's.
Right.
So I don't, I'm happy sending up a letter the way it is and then if people, you know, I mean, the truth is, I guess, oh, that's gonna be moved anyways, probably.
Hopefully.
If one of these articles passes, so.
Right, right. So, actually, we can create with the town, is there anything else like that?
Yeah, they have to sign, write.
Um, we could add a sentence there if.
And it's not.
It's not, okay.
I think, yeah, I think most people are gonna.
Okay.
But either way.
So, Ben, have you looked at these two letters? And are you comfortable with them?
Okay.
Okay, so I am as well, so.
I'll move them.
Start them.
Thank you, all those in favor, say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye.
And we'll prepare them and then let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, that's gonna be a stack of signatures, right, cuz.
Yeah, it's not too, too much, but the butters is just four, but the other one.
And that's, at this point, that's the one that we're getting close to the timeline for notifying.
The butter ones needs to be out by the twenty third, the latest, so.
Oh, okay, so.
We're, you're okay.
We're okay with.
A few days.
Next week.
Yep, that'd be great.
Okay. And I'm taking a little extra time to make notes because the last time I didn't, a budget committee meeting.
There was a snafu.
Things went awry. We did have a very good budget committee meeting last night, I thought. We had some public, um, good discussion. It was clear to me that the budget committee members individually had done their homework and had thought about the upcoming two budgets, so. Okay, we've done that one. We have an intent to cut for David and Barbara Robey. Have four oh seven lot eighty-nine on New Hampshire Route ten. And, Dina. Do we have also the highway access forms signed by our road agent for this intent to cut?
If they need to put a road in, we will. Actually, we will not, it's a state road. So we don't.
So they can just do what they want.
Well, no, they'd have, they'd have to get one from the state, that's their responsibility.
Do we get a copy of what they get from the state?
I don't know, we never have before. And we never know whether the state.
The equipment has begun to accumulate there.
Yeah, we never know whether the state does or doesn't do what they do, usually. But because it's a state road, we wouldn't.
Okay. What do we wish to do with this intent to cut?
Certainly, it doesn't matter too much what, what.
No.
Which, which law is this?
It's the one up there where the swampy, swamp is.
It's the lot between the corner where the house is and where the burb comes down and goes under the road. About ten or fifteen years ago, a bunch of little white pines, I think, were planted there. It's right across from the wildlife area.
Which wildlife?
It's north, north, uh, south of the wildlife.
No.
Oh, huh.
It's right, it's almost right across the street. It's across from the ball field.
Oh, I, you're talking about, by Post Pond, that field.
Yes, by Post Pond.
They grew up.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's Helen, what's her name's land, I just bought.
Yeah.
The lady from Holland.
Yeah.
That chunk that you just bought.
No, that.
It was just cleaning it out.
Yeah, he wants it open again.
Yeah.
Yes, he wants to make a, a.
Yeah, no, just junk wood.
A field again.
Yeah, it's just pine, they're just chipping it.
You need to get an intent to cut approved, even if you're not selling the wood, you're just.
Absolutely.
Depending on how much wood you're cutting.
Well, if you're using, you have up to ten thousand board feet if you're using it yourself. You still need to get an intent to cut, but you don't have to pay taxes on it. But after that, you do, but like chipped, you know, they can sell that for chipped.
Fifteen cords. Okay.
So, you've got a field, starting to grow up with ponds and stuff, and you wanna just open it up? And you're just gonna cut those pines down and chip them and leave the chips on the ground? I have to get permission?
You should get an intent to cut, yep, cuz the minute you start cutting, somebody's gonna call and report you and.
But, you know, if, if you brush out them when they're this big.
If, right.
You don't have to worry about that.
Right. Yep, the state keeps track of all that.
Somebody would've had to have done that before I bought the land, so.
I understood that if it was a very small cut, you didn't need the intent to cut, like ten or twelve trees, but.
If the trees are a danger to your home, close enough to live to your home or your driveway, that's the only two things you don't need an intent for.
Okay.
That I know of.
Yeah, Judy, it's too bad you cut that fifteen acre, four hundred house.
Yeah.
Now, we're gonna come after her.
My quarter acre, no, actually, we, we, the wind has helped us with four or five that came down, took out a power line. One hit the garage roof many years ago. And then the rest came out cuz they were all rotten with the bulldozer. So we didn't cut nothing.
Good.
But I guess next time. Okay, that's been approved.
Bulldozer exception.
It's a bulldozer exception. And if you wanna see them, they're still stacked up in the yard. They're going back to nature. Um, milfoil grant paperwork.
So I'm asking for your permission to appoint me as a signee like you generally do each year?
Yeah, that's good idea.
So I can just process it all and get her done.
Okay, Ben is moving.
I'll second.
David is seconding, appoint Dina to sign, to execute. Paperwork. Okay, that'll facilitate that. Okay.
And David, you seconded that?
Yes, he did.
Thank you very.
All those in favor, say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, we have an oath of office. Luke Prince has been reappointed to the Recreation Commission. Are those staggered terms, Dina, or?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, courtesy of.
When am I up?
You're not. You're just, well, you're up when the Select Board changes.
Boots me out?
Changes who does what committee.
Okay, next up is, I believe Mr. Khan has spoken with town council and maybe a hospital person, can you listen?
Yeah, no. Not with a hospital person, we've been trading calls and keeping this in charge, so.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to talk to him.
So you still need to talk to him, okay.
So we're still.
Yeah, what town council said is the, the, the same things I said. That, that the indemnification provision in this agreement is horribly one-sided and they recommend that we adopt, that we try to use the language that our insurer, Primex, uh, recommended, which is basically each side will indemnify the other for malfeasance by the, by the, by something the other party did that costs them money.
Okay.
Not balanced.
So we'll see.
And she also couldn't explain to me why we would need to get permission to withdraw from the agreement, so.
And you know what? I found out that we're not the only town that feels the same way. There's been other towns who went around and around with them. They didn't get anywhere, but you never know, you might.
My guess is they just don't want to.
You know, I mean, I'll tell you something. Well, and then the, the other thing that, that Laura pointed out is that there are numerical problems with the agreement. The, the amount of indemnification required under that draft agreement doesn't line up with what we have available from us from Primex. And, 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 Dina's telling me.
That's not, I, that's not accurate because I double checked.
Well, that's what the Primex letter says.
I, I double checked with Primex though, and there's some additional thing. So it is three million and, you know.
Okay, cuz that's not what they said.
Cuz I said to her, do we need to get, would we have to get additional insurance?
Right.
And the woman, I have an email and I can send it to you. The woman at Primex said, no, because.
Okay, that's not what the, what the comments that Primex sent us saying.
I know.
So we need to get that cleared up and in.
So I've been trying to talk to Tom at Tremen, Tremenco?
Tremen, Tremarco, I think it's pronounced.
Tremarco at, at, at Dartmouth, the cockpit, see if there's anyone to negotiate this stuff. I really don't know what I would do if they say, no, it's our way or the highway, I. And it's terrible to contemplate foregoing, having a fast squat, but this is really a pretty terrible agreement.
Yeah.
Well, you already have one, you're in one right now.
No, we're not.
You're in an old one that was signed.
We're in an old one with.
You're in one that was signed in two, like, two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, but it was signed by someone who didn't have legal authorization to sign it, and so.
I understand that.
It's probably not binding on. Yeah, but it was signed by someone who didn't have legal authorization to sign it, and so it's probably not binding on the town.
But I'm telling you, that's what the Hitchcock's going by, that we already have one, so.
But that's okay, too.
Well, the only option.
Maybe you don't sign it.
Is, I think, New London, or are they part of Hitch now? And Cottage Hospital's probably the nearest hospital that's not part of the Dartmouth.
Yeah, I have no clue if any other hospital that's not part of Hitchcock even does this, so I don't know.
Yeah.
So if it continues with what we have now, or the fire chief signed it without the select board signing it?
It wasn't the fire chief, just so you know. I didn't want him to get blamed. Right, it was the fast squad president.
Yep.
Well, if somebody. All right, if the fast, if they sign it again, then it's not binding.
No.
No.
No, we can't do that.
They already asked, and we said no, so they can't do that.
We can't do that. We can't, it's one thing if somebody unauthorizes signs of the agreement and we don't know about it.
Right.
We have a pretty good argument on those circumstances that we're not bound.
Why did Dartmouth accept the signature?
Because they're not paying attention.
They didn't think about it, yeah.
Because they didn't think about it and they're not paying attention. And it's not clear. They would have an argument that that guy had apparent authority and they, that he, we might be bound anyways. But when the select board doesn't know about it, we have a pretty decent argument that we're not bound. Once the select board knows about this, which we now know, we can't have somebody unauthorized sign it and say, oh, we're off the hook. We know.
Well, and the hospital probably doesn't understand the whole select board thing either.
Oh, I don't think they care to understand.
You know, that you have the authority and somebody else wouldn't, but.
Yeah.
Take it where it has to go.
Well, they're educated now.
So, yeah, so you'll continue trying to get votes on, okay?
I'm gonna try to protect them. I mean, I don't, maybe they'll just say, no, you can't, we can't amend anything, but, but
Yep.
that is really an unreasonable position in my judgment. I mean, what we're asking, it's not like we're asking for something that really does terrible violence to their, their economics or anything.
Yeah, I know. And I have, I let Aaron know that, so I asked him to kind of nudge Tom to give you a jingle.
He did, he did several times. I was away fishing and we traded calls while I was driving and I just kept missing him.
Okay, good. Good. Okay.
And then he, he called when we were in our meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, great.
My phone was ringing while we were here. I could only step out.
My goodness.
Oh, what a shame. Okay, well, I'm glad you tried.
That is too bad. Yeah, me too. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you for continuing to try and see what you can come up with. And maybe something we could suggest is how about if town's attorney inserted those couple of paragraphs?
Why could you do that?
Into the contract.
Well, it's been inserted in it by Primex.
Oh, okay.
Well, no, Primex just addressed the indemnification provision. They didn't address the permission. But I, I can make these amendments liquidally split, and it's not complicated, illegal drafting.
So we could do that.
I, I'd be happy to do that. I could, if there, if Tom says that they're, they're willing to at least consider changes, then what I would suggest is I'll mark up the agreement. We can get Joe to review it or Laura.
Naomi is the one that was doing this.
Naomi, that's right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Naomi is the one I talked to on the road, too. I could get drafted, get Naomi to look at it, and then, and we can send them a red line and say, here's the changes we would like to make and see if they're okay.
Yep, that sounds good. So it doesn't cost them anything if that happens to be held off.
This is a straightforward, is it?
It's an every-year one that you do, but.
Yeah, but which one do we sign?
Both of them. Um, um, when Judy, when Judy calls them, I'll tell you what they are.
Well, I guess.
I already passed the next thing on to him because, you know, sorry.
Tax and planning map maintenance contracts. We're just signing those.
Yeah. Yes. Yes, this is our annual agreement with Cartograph, well, it's not called Cartographics anymore. It's CIA, I think it is, but.
I think you're right.
Yeah, and it's for, there's two. One is for our tax maps and one is for our planning, uh, planning that David used, well, doesn't really use them, but the planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked at these. These looked okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to rush you.
What's that pile?
This pile is for later.
Has a signature thing on it.
Yes, it does.
It's coming.
It's for later.
Yeah, when I have to call to come back here to sign something.
No, no.
No, no, it's on the list. Don't worry.
Okay, um.
I was gonna say something, but I won't.
Okay, let's, let's take up the current use acreage change in property, and then we're gonna do the equalization ratio study, which is what I think everybody's waiting for. Then we'll sign the warrant, and then we'll go into non-public. Is that okay, Deena?
I'm trying to decide.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, that's fine. All right, my brain is fried. Okay, this is a very unique circumstance that has happened. We have a piece of property in the town of Lyme that in it's a long story, sorry, but that was purchased in nineteen, sorry, I think nineteen seventy-something. Um, and it was part of. Come on, Ben, help me out with the name of the lady that owned the, um.
Oh, up on top of the hill?
Yeah.
The road horses.
Pony Hill Farm. What was her name?
Vivian.
Thank you. So part of all of her land that she had many, many, many acres. So this lot started out originally back in seventy-six, I think it was. Yeah, seventy-six, when these people purchased it. The deed is very vague. There's really no mets and bounds. There is no survey. There's no, there was no nothing. Originally, the lot was put on our tax, old tax maps and the assessments as an eight-acre lot. When the town of Lyme in nineteen eighty-six switched mappers between surveys, subdivision maps, and, and subdivision maps and certified surveys, they calculated this lot as fifteen acres.
Whole size.
So it was changed, and I have a letter from the select board to the owners describing why it was changed and what the old acre was and what the new acres were and the map and lot number. So for years, these people have had five acres out of current use and ten acres in current use. They decided to sell their home recently and had a survey done. And the survey came back that this lot is ten point two acres. So the point two acres is not enough acreage to be out of current use for, to, to take care of the house and the driveway and the septic and the barns and everything they have on this property that was within the five acres that was not in current use. So it is.
I don't understand what you're saying.
It's only ten point two acres.
The whole lot.
The whole lot now.
And what did they think it was before?
Fifteen, because they were told by the town block.
Okay, so they, they're short five acres and they're not enough.
Right, well, there's a whole lot more to this story, and I don't want to talk about it in public. And it was a, it's a neighbor land issue as to where this particular boundary line is. And the deeds back then were so bad that there's no proof of where it was. So the person that did the survey form came back with a ten point two. So that's what now, they've, they have an interest in party that wants to purchase the house. They're fine that it's ten point two acres, but has to come out of current use. These people, there's a provision, there's an RSA that covers it. I don't have RSA with me, though. Because it was essentially a mistake, mishap, mishappen, miss, whatever it's called.
Not intentional.
Right, that the board can approve to withdraw this from current use without charging them a land use change penalty.
When the new survey was done, were actual pins put in the ground?
When they did the new survey?
That came up with the ten point two acres. You said a survey was done.
And it was done by a professor.
It was done by a surveyor?
Then there's pins in the ground.
Whether they're in the right place or not, who knows, but.
He's a surveyor.
Correct, well, the, the people, yeah, and it was, like I said, there's more to it.
Well, I know there's more to it. To me, that's a critical thing, because then in the future, you have an actual survey and you have actual pins.
Oh, exactly, right.
So you're not going to trees and stone walls and misses.
Right, and that was the problem with the deed.
Yeah.
You know, when to the.
That's the way deeds were.
It went to the yellow pine that was, you know, twelve inches around in nineteen seventy-eight and now.
Even the pins aren't that much better. I had a neighbor just done this.
And now it's been cut off. Well, you can, people do do that. Somebody cut the tree down, and so that's gone, and, you know.
Okay.
We had, we had a tree blow over and the people wanted, or they or hell wanted us to come take care of the tree. It could be a few of them like that. And I go up to look at it, and there's a pin. It was a corner marking tree for their lot. And I said, that's your tree. I said, that was left marking your, your corner, and there's the pin. And then he shut up after that.
All right, so I, I, my view on this is that I'm fine approving the land use change petition and the, and not imposing a penalty as long as it's clear that we have the legal authority to do that. We don't have the RSA in front of us, and I wonder if we should consult town council and just have them confirm or Deena?
Well, I can tell you that I spoke to Sam Green at the DRA.
Okay.
And I also spoke to our assessor, who was sending me the RSA. But he was on the road, so I don't think he's done yet, but I.
So, so it's, go ahead. You're, you're moving to approve the land use.
No, I'm just saying, I think, I'm fine with it.
Change without penalty as long as we have assurance that we can let it go.
As long as, as long as it's clear that we have, that we're not breaking the law.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, and so as soon as we get that RSA, hopefully during this meeting, we can take a vote. Is that it?
Oh, I wish you'd vote. I meant, if we can, then you can just come in and sign it after I.
Then I.
Get whatever it is.
Okay, get it on.
Okay, Judy, aye. Um, I will withdraw my aye if we don't get sufficient.
Yeah. Yeah, my aye is continued on.
Well, it's just right here, as long as it's proven to be legal.
Yeah.
I might know it is, but that's okay.
I'm, I'm not doubting your word. I want it in these minutes.
I get it.
You know what? I don't make mistakes, and you wouldn't want to be in the position of guaranteeing to the select board that this is right.
Totally get it. I don't want to be, exactly. Right.
You should look at it.
Well, I can go back on Sam Green at the DRA.
Yeah, I don't think he has any liability for giving you off-the-cuff advice on the phone.
I'm kidding, I'm joking, joking, joking.
So let me see, where did we go? We went to the current use. That's done. All right, let's take.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take up the twenty twenty-three equalization ratio study.
So when you come in to sign the letters after I find that, get that RSA to the meeting, you can sign these two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, we have received, we have received, holdy, holdy on a sec. A letter from the Department of Revenue Administration and a letter from our, uh, assessor. And the DRA said they are charged with the responsibility of annually equalizing the local assessed valuation of municipalities. The department has conducted a sales assessment ratio study using market sales, which have taken place in Lyme between October one twenty-two and September thirty twenty-three. Based on this information, we, Department of Revenue Administration, have determined the average level of assessment for real property in Lyme as of April one, two thousand twenty-three. Based on the enclosed survey, we have determined a median ratio for real property in Lyme for tax year twenty twenty-three to be sixty-four point eight percent. The median ratio is the generally preferred measure of central tendency for assessment equity, monitoring appraisal performance and determining reappraisal priorities or evaluating the need for reappraisal. The median ratio, therefore, should be the ratio used to modify the market value of properties under review for abatement to adjust them in accordance with the overall ratio of all properties in Lyme. We have also determined that the overall equalization ratio weighted mean for real property in Lyme for tax year twenty twenty-three to be sixty-six point one percent. This ratio will be used to equalize the modified local assessed valuation for all real property and utilities in Lyme. In an effort to provide municipalities with more detailed information regarding their level of assessment, i.e. equalization ratio, and dispersion, i.e. coefficient of dispersion and price-related differential, we have prepared separate analysis sheets for various property types. See attached summary sheet showing Lyme's stratified figures and a further explanation of the DRA's stratified analysis. And there is a twenty twenty-three ratio study attached and a study summary report attached. And this information is available from Jordan or by email. Our assessor also said to end, we have printed out. Is this like show and tell?
I know.
The assessor said that he's sending the draft report, which we were not able to share. There were twenty-three qualified sales from October one twenty-two through September thirty twenty-three included in the study. And he cites also the sixty-six point one and sixty-four point eight. And he said, the measure of fairness is the coefficient of dispersion, which is the average percentage most of the sales fell from the median, was seventeen point eight percent. The price-related differential is one point oh five, which indicates a bias towards the higher value of properties assessments. In conclusion, the assessments in Lyme are still within the acceptable range statistically and are considered equitable as evidenced by the coefficient of dispersion. However, you may want to prepare to conduct a townwide reassessment in twenty twenty-five. Due to the current market circumstances, completing the reassessment prior to the mandated five years is becoming increasingly common throughout the state. And we did, in fact, prepare for twenty twenty-five. We have money in the budget in our anticipating act.
Correct.
So what else should we say or do?
I think you're just informing people.
Okay, and people can take this up?
It's nothing that you have to vote on or approve because the DRA is that, you're.
I'd like to hear from folks, though. I mean, we, my sense is that we have a, 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 a segment of our citizenry that is, um, that has strong feelings about these matters. And so if, if folks have views about what the DRA has done or what, what we ought to be doing, I'd like to hear it.
Okay.
We should open it up to.
We can open it up to people that are on the Zoom or to Michael who's here with us. Michael, nothing? Okay.
Anybody on Zoom like to speak to this? I see no hands. I see no waving, no nothing, so.
Okay, then, that's where we are.
Or forever, all in your piece.
If only we could say that. Our next item coming up is signing the twenty twenty-four town warrant. And it now shows Article Two with zoning articles and, uh.
It's thirty-seven pages long now, don't just.
Yes, it is. The zoning articles do go for several pages. Town operating budget of two million, eight hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. dollars.
Yes, sir, you got three of them.
Capital reserve funds and trust funds in going four hundred and ten thousand dollars, supported by the select board and by the budget committee. Repairs to Edgel Bridge, state of New Hampshire block grant appropriation, withdrawal from the Public Works Facility Capital Reserve Fund for the fire station, another withdrawal for the annual payment for the fire truck, a withdrawal from heavy equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a backhoe. And the two most recent articles that we have worked on from this board, want to discontinue a section between Shoestrap Road and Maple Lane that is presently class six and in the alternative, an article to reclassify this section of class six to a class A trail. If Article Ten to discontinue passes, Article Eleven will be null and void. And we had requests from people interested in this article to turn it into a trail rather than discontinue it, so that's why there are two things there. And then Article Twelve is to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to remove materials stored on properties located at one sixteen Dorchester Road and one seventy-two Goosebund Road, that the Grafton County Superior Court by its order dated November twenty-fifth twenty fifteen has authorized the town to remove and to cover any legal or other related costs associated with such action. And then there's a Independence Day celebration, milfoil treatment, withdrawal from the cemetery maintenance gifts and donations fund, and then two veterans' tax credits, just clarifying those, and finally, in Article Eighteen, having to do with a line committee power electric aggregation plan, and, uh, no money there to be raised from taxation. So I believe signatures will be forthcoming.
We're signed.
You've both signed it? Okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no hurry. And now, do we have anything further? Oh, I have one thing. Ben, if you can think about, it's time for the select board, uh.
Town report.
Town report letter to go in, Dina has done a great job starting it. If you think of anything, if you send me an email to be included, you know, highlights of the year.
Highlights of the year.
Anything special or wonderful you can think of that should be mentioned in there for you guys?
The good stuff we did.
The good stuff.
Anyway, you don't have to do it now, I just wanted you to, I'll be working on it over the weekend and it would be.
All right, well, just send me what everybody else has got and then I'll see if I can add something.
Okay, can you send that?
Absolutely.
And that was so helpful.
Oh, good.
Yes, I am so excited.
Good.
And did you think of anything else for public right now?
No.
Okay, perfect timing. It is some darn time, ten fifty-seven, and I'm going to move that we go into non-public session.